Research and application of management strategies to control pests and diseases of pollinators will come to order. Thank you all for being here today to discuss an issue that's extremely important to our country's agricultural industry. Today's hearing of the Subcommittee on Horticulture, Research, Biotechnology and Foreign Agriculture will review the current health of our nation's bee pollinators. Bees play a critical role in plant reproduction, contributing an estimated $16 billion annually in added value to more than 30% of the crops that we produce in this country. My colleagues and I are pleased to welcome several witnesses who have direct involvement and firsthand experience with bee pollinators. Over the past several years, beekeepers have experienced significant losses due to colony collapse. The precise reason for this colony collapse, this order has not yet known. However, a leading cause appears to be the varroa mite pest. Some believe other factors including disease, diet, nutrition, genetics, habitat loss, beekeeping management practices, and the improper use of pesticides may also play a role. To address these issues, the Agricultural Committee authorized increased funding for pollinator research as part of the 2008 Farm Bill. Similarly, the 2014 Farm Bill reauthorized and expanded many of these provisions, addressing managed bee, honeybees, and native pollinators as part of the Research, Conservation and Specialty Crop Program. As we hear from our distinguished panel of witnesses today, we hope to gain a better understanding of the role of our nation's pollinators and the status of research, both on causes of colony collapse disorder and the possible tools to combat this problem. Before us today is a panel of four distinguished witnesses. We're joined by Dr. Jeff Pettis, Research Leader of the USDA ARS Bee Research Laboratory. Dr. Pettis oversees all USDA research concerning threats that may play into the sharp decline of our nation's pollinators. We're also joined by Mr. Dan Cummings, CEO of Capé Farms, did I say that correctly, Mr. Cummings? Capé Farms, in Chico, California. Capé Farms manages over 10,000 acres of almonds and walnuts in the Central Valley of California. Also is partner and CFO of Oliveres Honeybees.
Oliveres.
Oliveres. That may be the Georgia-California divide there. Every year, he ensures California is provided with a healthy supply of honeybees. Also, we have Mr. Jeff Stone, Executive Director and CEO of the Oregon Association of Nurseries. The Oregon Association of Nurseries represents more than 1,200 growers, retailers, landscapers, and suppliers in the ornamental horticultural industry. We have Dr. David Fisher, Director of Pollinator Safety Group and Manager of the Bayer North America Bee Center located in the Research Triangle of North Carolina. Dr. Fisher's expertise is in the area of terrestrial exotox- ecology and risk assessment. We appreciate the time each of you have given us, and we'll have a more detailed introduction of you as we go forward. I would now like to recognize my colleague from Oregon, the ranking member, Mr. Kurt Schrader, for any opening remarks that he may have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really appreciate the opportunity to have this hearing. As we all know, honeybees are critical to agriculture. Without them, we don't have much of the agricultural products that we know and love and create a lot of great economic opportunity for our country. Honeybee populations suffered over a 30% decline over the past 20 years. The colony disorder that we're talking about, hopefully going to get some information here today, has been a longstanding area of research. The honeybees themselves, pollinating over 90 different food, fiber, and seed crops across the country, $15 billion annual industry. It covers the gamut of crops, as we know. There's over 2 million colonies transferred all over the country to pollinate our crops by the beekeepers, the commercial beekeeping folks out there. Have some experience myself personally. Our family had a small apiary itself that we used on our farm, along with some commercial friends of ours that would help us with our crops. The big decline became acute, as I understand it, back in 2006, 2007 winter. The 2008 Farm Bill, as we all know, put some money out there for some research into what some of the causes would be. We furthered that in the 2014 Farm Bill, going to carry that research initiative hopefully through 2018. As a veterinarian in my previous life, when I actually had a real job, it was illustrative to me that most of the time, a lot of these disease entities, these disorders that we see, whether they're in animals or in our crops and stuff, they're multifaceted. It's not like one thing, and I think that's what I'm hearing from folks out there in the industry and some of the folks that benefit from the industry, that, you know, we're going to be having to deal with several different problem causes and figure out what to do there. The press sometimes will bring up one, but there's oftentimes more than one, and I hope this hearing adds some thoughtful science to the process and gets us further down the road about good policy. And with that, I yield back to the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. And as said, before us today, we have panel of four distinguished witnesses. Dr. Jeff Pettis is the Research Leader of the USDA, the ARSB Research Laboratory. I'd now like to yield to Mr. Lamafa for an introduction to Mr. Cummings, who is from his district, as I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to today have Mr. Cummings from Northern California, constituent of mine here. Dan is the CEO of Capé Farms, which is responsible for managing over 10,000 acres of almonds and walnuts, also the CFO of Olivera's Honeybees, one of the world's largest producers of queen bees for resale. He's a frequent speaker at national honeybee conventions, almond industry research conferences, and international trade shows. His 30-plus years of experience have prepared him as a provider of background information and frequently quoted authority on almonds, honeybees, and numerous publications and media, including The Wall Street Journal, Fortune Magazine, Newsweek, and the BBC. Dan's also a director on the Blue Diamond Growers, who've graciously provided us snacks here today, so, and has helped me to illustrate that we say "almond" without the L in California a lot, so. So, he's on the Blue Diamond Growers as a director and immediate past chairman of Project APIS-M and the chairman of the Bee Task Force of the Almond Board of California. Dan has traveled extensively, having visited over 50 countries around the world, often promoting almonds during his tenure as vice chairman of the Almond Board and chairman of that organization's marketing committee. He holds BA in economics from Stanford University, an MBA from Harvard, and has been an instructor of the Capstone Course on Competition and Strategy in the College of Business at California State University, Chico. Dan, thank you for appearing today. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
I'd like now recognize Mr. Schrader again for any introduction, an introduction to Mr. Stone from Oregon.
I'll make a brief, Mr. Chairman. Just really pleased to have Mr. Stone here. Jeff is no stranger to Capitol Hill and the goings-on, so he brings a wealth of knowledge about the process. He's been Executive Director of the Oregon Association of Nurseries for a number of years now and has a great reputation back home. He's one of the leaders in our agricultural community when it comes to solving problems that affect all agriculture, and really want to welcome him here and appreciate him coming.
And again, we have Dr. David Fisher with Pollinator Safety and Manager for Bayer North America Bee Care Center from North Carolina. Gentlemen, Dr. Pettis, your opening statements.
Chairman Scott, Ranking Member Schrader, and members of the Subcommittee, I'm Dr. Jeff Pettis, Research Leader of the Bee Research Lab in Beltsville, Maryland, a research laboratory dedicated to honeybee health. I'm pleased to appear before you today to discuss a serious threat to the honeybee, the parasitic mite varroa, and also pollinator declines, an issue that threatens U.S. food security. About one-third of our diet, directly or indirectly, benefits from honeybee pollination, and these tend to be the foods that add flavor and diversity to our diet, the fruits, nuts, and vegetables that we enjoy. We can survive on grains like corn, rice, and wheat, but we thrive on the fruits, nuts, and vegetables that bees provide. I want to focus my remarks now on one specific threat to honeybees, the parasitic mite varroa, a modern plague of honeybees and responsible for the deaths of massive numbers of the colonies, not only here in the U.S. but worldwide. When varroa mite was first found in this country in 1987, we had a strong population of honeybees in the wild. Beekeepers managed more than 3 million colonies for crop pollination, and their winter losses were typically around 10 to 15 percent. Today, wild populations of bees are virtually gone. We manage 2.5 to 2.7 million colonies, and the economic losses and the sustainability of beekeeping is at a tipping point. Ultimately, if no solutions are found for the varroa mite and other plagues of honeybees, our food could become more expensive. Varroa mites are like ticks. They suck the blood of the bee physically and are a huge parasite in relation to the size of the honeybee. To illustrate this, if a honeybee were the size of a person, it would bite like you having a tick the size of this large navel orange feeding on you. So, again, if you can imagine that size parasite on an average human, you can see that the varroa mite is, in fact, a very physically damaging parasite, but in addition, it acts much like a mosquito and will transmit viruses and other diseases that affect the bee. What bees and beekeepers need in research is to build better tools to truly reduce the size of the varroa that varroa represents. Researchers at USDA scientific agencies, the Agricultural Research Service, and the National Institute of Food and Ag are working in short term to provide better management practices and getting that information out to the beekeepers. For long-term solutions, we are looking at the genetics of both the mite and the bee, and we're also looking at better ways of nationally monitoring the bee health around the country. To give you an idea of how seriously the critical need for new solutions is, this past February, USDA hosted a varroa summit. We brought together more than 75 individuals representing a broad array of stakeholders, and they talked for two days and came up with a number of long-term and short-term solutions. We have a report coming out from that, which will help guide us in future research on varroa. However, even if the varroa mite problem disappeared tomorrow, and I want to emphasize that, even if the varroa mite problem disappeared tomorrow, honeybee health is complicated. This would not by itself solve all the problems facing honeybees. In the last 20 years, a whole host of new honeybee pathogens, viruses, bacteria, fungi, mites, have entered the United States, and colony collapse disorder, a syndrome for which scientists still do not have a cause, while it has abated, continues to take a toll on apiaries. Exposure to pesticides in the environment may be weakening bee colonies, possibly making them more susceptible to other stressors. A lack of diversity in nectar and pollen resources may also play a major role in stressing honeybee colonies in the environment. Lastly, our loss of honeybees may reflect a larger issue of pollinator decline, with the honeybee acting as an indicator species. The relative contribution of these different stressors to colony deaths, including colony collapse disorder, is not well-understood, and solving this problem will take an all-hands-on-deck approach, including research, public education, increased foraging lands, public and private partnerships, to address the loss of pollinators. To meet today's increasing pollination demands, we need well over 3 million managed honeybee colonies in this country. To meet that goal, we need to make beekeeping profitable again, and I believe that starts with limiting the impact of varroa, but it goes beyond that. So I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you today about pollinator health and food security, and I'll be glad to answer questions as time permits.
Thank you, Dr. Mr. Cummings.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you for inviting me to testify this morning on the importance of honeybee health to the United States almond industry. My name is Dan Cummings. I am the CEO of Capé Farms, where I produce almonds and walnuts. Additionally, I am the chairman of the Almond Board, California Bee Task Force, and have served as vice chairman of that board. My almonds are delivered to Blue Diamond Growers, on whose board I serve. Blue Diamond is a nonprofit, farmer-owned, marketing cooperative. U.S. almonds are grown exclusively in California and are the largest tree crop in California with a value of $6 billion. Over $4 billion of almonds were exported to the world last year. Over 80 percent of the world's almond supply is produced in California. The honeybee is essential for the global food supply. One-third of our diet comes from honeybee pollinated plants. The continuing health of honeybee populations is a matter of concern to the global agricultural community. Managed honeybees are vital to more than 90 bee-pollinated crops in the United States. Nearly $20 billion in farm income is dependent on honeybees. California almond growers depend on honeybees for their livelihood. Approximately 1.6 million colonies, approximately 2/3 of all the commercially kept honeybees in the United States, are needed to pollinate California's almond orchards. California almonds are the first and largest crop, each spring, to require honeybees for pollination. Our industry partners with beekeepers with whom we share the common goal of healthy honeybees to support the future growth of almond production. The two industries are inextricably linked. Almond pollination has become a primary economic driver of the honeybee industry. It may surprise you to learn that almond pollination fees to beekeepers nearly equal the value of all commercially-produced and sold honey in the United States. The Almond Board has invested $2.3 million in honeybee health research. As a grower-owned cooperative, Blue Diamond Growers is the largest single contributor to the Almond Board. Project APIS-M has further invested over $2.2 million on behalf of honeybees. The Almond Board created a bee task force whose members include almond growers and processors, beekeepers, and researchers. The purpose of this group is to make recommendations for research and effective pollination practices. 51 percent of almond farms are less than 50 acres, and over 80 percent of almond farms are owned and operated by families. Almonds are the earliest blooming natural food source for honeybees. Honeybees found in almond orchards enjoy an abundance of natural forage. As a result, hives typically increase after almond pollination and bloom. Because the almond industry recognizes the essential role honeybees play in sustaining the global food supply, it and Project APIS-M have together invested approximately $4.5 million in honeybee research. This is more money than any other U.S. commodity is invested in honeybee research. The focus of this research is on improving the health of hives, which includes improving honeybee nutrition, managing pests and diseases effectively, restoring honeybee genetic stock diversity, helping honeybees cope with parasites and disease, and other areas related to help improve their health and longevity. Our research has led to several breakthroughs in maintaining honeybee health. The focus has been on ensuring better honeybee nutrition and the overall improvement of hive health. Research has also resulted in establishing best practices for dealing with varroa mite. This is the pest that emerged in the mid-1980s that attacks beehives by weakening and shortening the lifespan of honeybees on which they feed. Initial feedback from beekeepers has been that those who have adopted newer bee management practices experience improved honeybee hive health and performance. Our industry is also part of an alliance that created a farming guide to promote reduced risk and environmentally responsible pest management practices. The health of the honeybee is a top priority in the best management practices. These guidelines are shared with all growers. Several promising new bee research programs funded by the almond industry are underway. Dedicated research to improve honeybee genetic stock has resulted in breeding programs for hygienic behavior to help control diseases like the varroa mite. Another project extends best practices to queen honeybee breeders to assure honeybee health and genetic diversity. The almond industry was instrumental in the development of Megabee, a new nutritional supplement for honeybees. California almond growers will continue to lead in the investment in honeybee research, including honeybee nutrition, improved honeybee genetics, the effective management of pests and diseases, and the impact of pesticides. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for holding this important hearing on this very critical subject. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Mr. Stone?
Chairman Scott, Ranking Member Schrader, members of the Subcommittee. I'm Jeff Stone, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Oregon Association of Nurseries. I have placed into the record my expanded testimony, and I'll be mercifully brief in my comments before you this morning. The Oregon nursery and greenhouse industry is the largest sector in agriculture. It is also the second-largest nursery state in the country, with over $744 million annually in sales. Nationally, the horticultures industries, production, wholesale, retail, and landscape service components represent about $163 billion in economic activity, with 1.1 million full and part-time jobs. I'm not going to tell you that the bee deaths that occurred in Oregon last summer was not bad. It was. A respected landscape company sprayed neonicotid pesticides on linden trees and flower, which are highly attractive to bees. This incident killed 50,000 bees, occurred less than a mile from my home office in Wilsonville on National Pollinator Day. I couldn't think of a worse set of circumstances. While I'm not a nursery grower, I work for them, and I don't even pretend to have the understanding about how to grow clean, quality plants, but I do know how to read. And I reviewed the label with the agricultural agency about the pesticide application. It was done improperly and against what the EPA label says, and that is the law. The Oregon Department of Agriculture began an investigation and instituted a temporary ban of the use of the pesticide containing the active ingredient dino-tephron. I practice that quite a bit, actually. I don't know how to say it. The investigation was completed and the restriction lifted at the end of 2013. At the beginning of 2014, the department imposed label language restrictions on the pesticides of dino-tephron and aminocloprid for those trees in the Tina genus, which includes linden and basswood trees. The concerns around pesticide use and the potential effects on bees is very important to all pesticide users, especially those involved in agriculture. Oregon farmers depend on bees to pollinate many of their crops. They also depend on pesticide as tools to combat destructive pests. The fear over the death of so many bees caused national attention, but the discussion in Oregon was engaged by beekeepers, environmental groups, and the farm community. Legislation was filed, and the state legislature would have moved neonicotoids to restricted use and functionally banned the use of the product in the state. House Bill, Oregon House Bill 4139, could have taken a negative approach, impeding interest group against interest group, but that did not happen. Instead, stakeholders listened to one another and determined that a science-based approach to pollinator health would lead to a better solution. So over the next two years, stakeholders will roll up their sleeves and work with Oregon State University, Arland Grant University, legislators in state agencies, to determine the most proper path forward. And there's science out there, quite a bit, quite a bit, actually, but what we hear in the press are from the extremes. However, Oregon chose not to cherry pick the science that suited a quick political point, instead doing the work which I urge Congress to do. We see a lot of white papers and press releases, but let's talk about what's actually happening on the ground. For a retailer who sprays pesticides indoors, that's away from bees, at risk was a critical Christmas season plant, poinsettias, who have a common pest called the whitefly. Now, nobody's going to buy, let alone sell, a plant that has a pest on it at your garden center. But the large garden center during this temporary ban was required to find an alternative pesticide for the whitefly and ended up using three times the amount of pesticide than they ordinarily would. Normally, it's a small drench application, so they put it right in the soil, for the highly affected neonics. Instead, a less effective pesticide was used, taking more time and making the business really consider the fact for human health, because there has far more toxicity. For the operator, it's just not a matter of if alternatives are present, but are they as effective, and can you get by with using less? Without a full pest management program, whiteflies will quickly develop resistance, threatening other crops, including cotton and other parts of this country. A pest management plan was developed in part with the nursery industry and the cotton industry with USDA. Pest and disease problems are real, and they can cost agriculture and threaten our natural environment. For pollinator health, there's no smoking gun. But as my written testimony explains, there are several factors for colony collapse disorder. Our industry has faced many challenges, Mr. Chairman, from invasive pests and pathogens, regulatory obstacles, and we're still recovering from the housing collapse that took out a third of my membership just in the past five years. But Oregon growers are innovative, and we want to work through issues and engage those that may disagree with us on this very emotional issue. But we need to let science bear a guide and not emotion, and it's my sincere hope that Congress engages in the same spirit. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. The linden tree is one of my favorite trees. There are a tremendous number of them on the Capitol, if you've noticed. Dr. Fisher?
Honorable members, my name is Dr. David Fisher, and I am here today as the Director of Pollinator Safety on behalf of Bayer. I've been involved in the field of environmental toxicology and risk assessment for 27 years, published more than 20 peer-reviewed scientific papers, and have supervised hundreds of studies evaluating crop protection products. I have led or participated in numerous scientific forums on bee health research, and am responsible for the management of Bayer's new Bee Care Center in North America. I thank you for the opportunity to appear before this committee and for your interest in promoting pollinator health. Our industry recognizes the importance of honeybees to American agriculture, and we fully support collaborative efforts to promote pollinator health and sustainable agricultural practices. Although the number of commercial honeybee colonies in the U.S. has been relatively stable since the late 1990s, bee losses following the winter season have averaged about 30 percent in recent annual surveys, more than twice what has been the historical expected average. Fortunately, beekeepers have been able to build up their colony numbers to meet crop pollination demands, but these losses highlight the need for more effective measures to promote bee health.
Most scientists...
Most scientists and bee experts agree that multiple factors can negatively impact honeybee health. These include parasites, diseases, adverse weather, habitat loss, crop and hive protection products, nutritional deficiencies, and hive management practices. Although some stressors are more important than others, the solution to bee health requires a comprehensive approach, as no single factor is solely responsible. A broad stakeholder group, including members of the crop protection industry, is working with the regulatory agencies to improve our understanding of pollinator risk assessment, particularly as it relates to a relatively new class of agriculture insecticides, the neonicotinoids. These products have been widely adopted by farmers and have replaced many older insecticides because of their effectiveness against destructive pests, and they have more favorable environmental profiles. Comprehensive reviews of studies and databases comprising 15 years of research have shown these products do not represent a threat to honeybee colony health. We strongly endorse ongoing research and meaningful stewardship practices, including the adoption of best management practices to avoid unwanted pesticide exposure. Although protecting honeybees from the unintended exposures to pesticides is a commitment shared by all agricultural stakeholders, this will have little practical consequence until we address the much broader and more significant threats to colony health. One threat in particular, which has been mentioned, I think, by everybody, is the varroa mite, an invasive parasite identified by the United States Department of Agriculture as the single most detrimental pest of honeybees and one most closely associated with colony decline. Understanding the impact of this parasite and how to best manage its destructive potential remains a critical gap in our effort to improve honeybee health. The recent Varroa Summit sponsored by the USDA provided a forum for international experts to discuss areas of research that one day may provide relief. Other recent federal initiatives, such as those of the National Resource Conservation Service, promote increased forage options for beekeepers, including the management of public lands to increase available forage for pollinators, could have a positive and lasting impact on bee health. Although more research conducted under real-world conditions is needed to evaluate the effectiveness of these programs, engagement by all agricultural stakeholders is essential. For more than 25 years, Bayer Crop Science has been committed to finding solutions to improve honeybee health. Our Bee Care Program was established to bring this experience and knowledge of bee health under one coordinated initiative, which includes opening our North American Bee Care Center, a state-of-the-art facility dedicated to improving bee health through collaborative research, education, and training; launching our Fluency Agent, an innovative seed application technology to reduce potential exposures to honeybees during corn seed planting; implementing our Sentinel Hive Program in collaboration with beekeepers to monitor the health of colonies associated with agricultural production; developing our novel Varroa Gate technology and new chemistry to aid beekeepers in managing destructive varroa mites; training more than 350 of our employees in North America as Bee Care ambassadors to promote bee health awareness in their local communities; and collaborating with leading researchers and participating in major scientific forums to remain current on the latest advances, as well as identify areas of fruitful bee research. Pollinators and crop protection products are critical to agriculture. The inherent complexity and broad ramifications associated with pollinator health means that state and federal government will continue to play a vital role in helping to support both bees and agriculture. Our industry is committed to stewardship and the protection of beneficial insects, and we look forward to working with our government agencies and measures that protect bees and ensure agricultural sustainability. Thank you once again for the opportunity to address this committee.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher, and we've been joined by Ms. Vicky Hartzler and by the ranking member Colin Peterson of the full committee. Glad to have both of you here. Dr. Pettis, just a reminder, before we get into the questions, we'll go in order by rank, and then we'll go in order of attendance, with the one exception that we'll let Mr. Peterson go first on the... Dr. Pettis, most of my questions will be for you as the lead researcher for the USDA with regard to this issue. Our other witnesses' statements, both written and oral, suggest that the varroa mite is the single most detrimental problem affecting honeybee health. Do you agree with that, and that the research on this pesticide is likely the task at hand, if you will, that we should address for the honeybees?
Very good question. I would say that the varroa mite, if you had to single out one single individual factor in bee health, was the one thing that, if we could eliminate it, it would have a big impact. I will say there's a lot of confusion about what colony collapse disorder is. It gets mentioned by the media, and the media loves it. We define colony collapse disorder as the absence of varroa, the absence of damaging levels of varroa. So we don't think that varroa mites have much of anything to do with colony collapse disorder, at least not directly. So it's, again, a mixed bag. If we had to single out one thing, varroa mite would certainly probably be it, but it's certainly not the only thing going on in bee health.
And this gets to your, I think, some of your previous indications. There's some constituencies that want to place the blame squarely on pesticides, particularly the neonicotinoids for honeybee colony loss. In Australia, neonicotinoids are registered, just as they are in the United States, as a seed treatment. Beekeepers don't experience the losses that we have here in North America, as well as Europe. The varroa mite is not in Australia, is that correct?
Correct.
So just by definition, if we're making decisions based on the facts, without the mite problem, growers in Australia don't have the same impact?
I think other places around the globe, the beekeepers have not suffered as they have in the U.S. The U.S. beekeepers have suffered higher losses, although Europe has also suffered some fairly high losses when we look at winter losses. Australia is the only exception that doesn't have varroa. So around the globe where honeybees are managed, Australia is the only continent that does not have varroa.
Okay. So we're seeing this in South America and other continents?
Varroa is widespread everywhere else in the world.
The U.S. EPA is involved in ongoing litigation regarding the registration of several neonicotinoid pesticides. With the data from Australia, these pesticides are being used in Australia, is my understanding. Is it fair to suggest that regulatory agencies would be ill-advised to oversimplify this problem and take an action against pesticides without the proper science and considering the other factors involved in this issue?
Chairman Scott, I'd like to remind you that I'm from the USDA and not from EPA, but I'll do my best.
That's why you're here.
Thank you.
I mean, because, you know, we don't allow the EPA.
Right. I think the level of agriculture in Australia, I'm actually fairly familiar with the beekeeping in Australia, and the level of agriculture is not what it is in the U.S. We have a much more advanced agricultural system, much more agriculture going on here. I think the reason the neonicotinoid group gets mentioned a lot is the fact that it represents a new exposure to pollinators, and that is it's moving systemically in the plant, and it can be found in nectar and pollen, unlike more traditional pesticides. But we still have issues with, you know, exposure in those realms as well. So I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, other than that the neonic raises a new level because of the exposure route.
Well, thanks for answering those questions, and again, we need to resolve this issue. It's extremely important to the United States, as well as many other continents and countries, and we just need to make sure we take a fact-based approach and resolve this based on the science and not emotion. Mr. Schrader?
I yield my, I yield some of my time to, whoops, okay, I guess I won't then. No, it's fine. Well, I go back to Mr. Pettis here, talking about the best management practices that are coming out. When do you think they're going to be out, and what do you think they're going to be including?
Well, we have, as you noticed, Mr. Cummings was mentioning these private, public-private partnerships. We've been working with things like Project APM to try to develop some of these best management practices. We have some already, but varroa mite in particular changes. It becomes resistant to various chemicals that we use to control it, so we're always having to adapt those best management practices. We have some already in place, Project APM, and other groups have put together some of these, but we're constantly adapting them.
Can you describe some of the practices?
Again, taking a kind of an integrated approach, not treating for varroa unless it reaches a certain threshold. We know that the bees can, you know, suffer a certain amount of damage without using chemicals to treat them, because the chemicals themselves that the beekeepers use are not benign. The other things are we're doing work with breeding and breeding-resistant stock. We have a whole lab, ARS lab dedicated to breeding and genetics, where we've developed a trait that confers resistance, and also a line of bees that confers some resistance to varroa mites. And in general, there's other aspects of bee health, where we look at the timing of feeding. Like, we have to feed bees that are on a pollination contract, and it's not so nutritious. We can feed bees supplemental food and help get them through that crunch time on a certain pollination contract. Cranberries come to mind, watermelons, things like that, that are not totally nutritious, but the bees have to be there for pollination, so we can do supplemental feeding. So I'd say these IPM things are ongoing.
What about the genetic programming? There's a lot of controversy nowadays on, you know, genetic modification. We've been doing it for centuries, frankly. We're just doing it differently nowadays. What are the prospects for improving the genetics even beyond what you've described?
We are looking for marker-assisted traits in bees that would confer, say, varroa resistance. We're not going to have a bionic bee. We're not going to modify bees in that way, but we can use certain better techniques to do marker-assisted breeding, and we're doing that.
All right, very good. Dr. Fisher, you talk a little bit about the seed application technology that, you know, you're working on?
Yes, we have a new additive that is added to the seed hopper we call Fluency Agent. It's a seed lubricant, is what it is. And what has occurred in some instances is with pneumatic planters that are in use, as the seeds are moved through the planter and put into the ground, they rub against the machinery, they rub against each other, and a little bit of dust is produced, and that is exhausted by these pneumatic planter systems. So what we're trying to do with Fluency Agent is eliminate this dust, because this dust has the potential to be, to move off-site to flowering plants where bees can contact them. So that's, what we've found is with our Fluency Agent, we can reduce the dust abrasion by anywhere from 50 to 90 percent. And we're actually working with a number of universities and other stakeholders. There's actually a corn-dust research consortium that's been convened by the Pollinator Partnership. I saw Tom Van Arsdale here today. And so that group has sponsored research to really look at how effective is this, and what are the best ways that we, you know, what are the ways that bees can be exposed to these seed treatments? But seed treatments, in general, are the best way to use an insecticide. You get it into the ground. The worst way to use an insecticide and expose bees, or the way that is, has the most potential to cause exposure, is to spray a bee-attractive plant when it's blooming, the linden tree example. When you spray a pesticide, you result in about 1,000 times greater residues in the pollen and nectar that the bees are collecting than if you use the chemical systemically. So that's really, the message I would have is, systemics, when they're used carefully and properly, are really the best way to go, and we want to be careful with insecticides, spraying anything, any plants that are bee-attractive.
And, Mr. Stone, you talked about the improper application. Could you describe what they did improperly in that one incident in Oregon?
Ranking member Schrader, absolutely. Linden trees, which are beautiful, as the chairman indicated. When they flower, a landscaper came and sprayed it on the whole tree, and it is a big attractor to bees, and, you know, a whole bunch just came in, and then they got in contact with it. And when you're in direct contact in that application, it is fatal. And so it was an improper use of that application, though.
And what's the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what's the recommendation for application?
For linden trees, it's when it's not in flower, so it is an attractor to the bees. So the bees, Oregon's fairly well north, and bees are out only at a certain part of the year, and you have to spray it when the tree is not in flower.
Thank you. All right, yield back.
Mr. Lamafa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cummings, again, thank you for traveling as far as you did to come be part of this here today. You stated, did you say it was two-thirds of U.S. bees are used at one time another during the year for almond pollination?
That's approximately true. It depends on when you take the baseline. So, for example, last year, I think the NASA report said there were two-and-a-half million colonies of honeybees. There were overwintering losses. If you use 2.4 million is available, 1.6 are required. It's around two-thirds. It's not an exact number, but it's pretty close.
And for California, that their need starts about that first week of February, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. So this is a pretty important thing to the almond industry, as I said almond this time, not ammon, so for the industry all up and down our state.
It's absolutely critical.
Could you emphasize that a little bit from your earlier comments? I know since we're time-shortened.
Sure. Most almonds are not self-fertile nor self-pollinating. There are some newer varieties now that are self-fertile, but they still do benefit from pollination, and that means moving the pollen from the anther of the flower to the stigma of the flower. So 90, 95% of the almonds in California need to be cross-pollinated, which requires a honeybee as a vector to move the pollen from one variety of almond to another variety of almond. And the percentage of nut set is highly correlated with the number of pollen grains that are transferred. So the better, the more thorough pollination transfer of pollen grains from one variety of almond to the other variety of almond dramatically improves the nut set and our crop. And this crop has continued to grow. It's 840,000 bearing acres this year. That crop value would be probably close to maybe 7 billion. I'm not used to talking in bees for almonds, $7 billion.
We do it all the time around here. So the challenges, the panelists talked about a little bit here. We hear about the mite. We hear about, you know, pesticides as a possibility. We might have other conditions with, say, our drought in California causing challenges. What would you rank, how would you rank, say, the top three that you face or we face in California, or for almonds across the board, what have you?
Growing challenges or bee challenges?
Bee challenges.
Bee challenges would be forage, the varroa mite, and pesticides.
Forage.
Forage is nutrition. Is it, this is my opinion, is that CCD and winter losses in honeybees are highly correlated with cumulative stress, and the largest stressors, we've discussed, is varroa mite. The second-largest is nutrition. So just the same as you and I, if we have a good balanced diet, is we're able to tolerate stressors in our lives a lot, you know, far more better. So, and with the drought in California, all of the growing regions for almonds in California are ranked as either extreme or exceptional drought, and there are no flowers. And this is true as well as many other places across the United States, which has reduced the amount of natural forage that are available to honeybees. So forage, varroa mite, and then pesticides.
I know firsthand, I know some other beekeepers around that they sell honey at some of the various festivals and such, and they'll have different varieties that come from star thistle or metform, of all things, and their varieties are down of those, some of those types due to some recent droughts. And it was mentioned on the panel earlier that you have some other supplements, other things you're working with bees, like, what was that food, the super bee?
Megabee.
Megabee. Oh, my, that's right. My brother-in-law has a super bee at Dodge, so I gotta make that. Megabee. So you're taking steps forward to really try and enhance just what you have naturally. Talk about that a little bit more, too, on how you're making bees healthier and more nutrition, et cetera.
Sure. Our bee operation with over 10,000 colonies of bees spends around a half a million dollars a year on supplemental feeds because of the dearth of available forage. The natural forage is absolutely indispensable. It comes in with different bacterias. It helps ferment pollen that is deposited in the comb into bee bread, and which converts it into amino acids. Jeff could elaborate on this far better than I could, but is absolutely critical for a good diet. The supplemental feed helps, certainly the proteins especially help. Project APM and the Almond Board of California have been sponsoring programs now to encourage almond growers and other farmers in California to plant forage, and we do so alongside of our orchards, so that before and after almond bloom, and even during almond bloom, there are alternative natural forage during almond bloom, there are alternative natural forage pollens and nectars available to the honeybees.
So a good ground cover is helpful to you all, too?
Absolutely. The C R P grounds in North Dakota are, are critical is that that acreage is, a lot of it's been converted over from C R P into soybean propagation and corn because of the value of those commodities make that ground now economically viable. And that's been a tremendous loss for the bee industry. Approximately 20% of all the honey made in the United States is made in North Dakota. Anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 colonies a year go to North Dakota after almond pollination, pollination of other crops. And so that C R P ground is critical and the planting mixtures, not only the acreage that's available, but as well the mix of the C R P cover crops. So a richer mix of legumes and flowering plants in that C R P mix would make a tremendous difference.
Okay, thank you. I might come back to you on bees and citrus, as we talked about in California a couple of years ago. So I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank all of you from the agriculture arena for your support on immigration reform. You've been stalwart on that, and I appreciate it very much. By the way, CCD is, is a Catholic, usually stands for something very different. Confraternity of Christian doctrine. I hope we can get back to that and fix the honeybees. But I guess I would ask about what are the best management practices then that we have? Because I agree with what Oregon did, you know, what is the science? Instead of getting into other issues, you know, people's opinions, I mean, what are the best management practices that we should have out there to protect the bees? And again, I agree with everything you said, how important the honeybees. I grew up on a chicken ranch in San Diego, and then because of the stench and the flies that was close to the city, it, it transformed itself into a plant nursery. And the plant nursery, of course, you have many different types of plants, many of them with flowers. And of course, we always had bees around and they were wonderful. So I would ask, you know, what are the best management practices, anyone that, I'll take a stab at that. Mr. Stone?
Thank you for the question. The best management practice, well, when this issue first was raised, we brought together our growers, our retailers, our landscapers, all in the one place, and we wanted to try to get at the root of the problem. An integrated pest management program is probably the best way to go about it because as I stated in my oral testimony, if you use just one type of pesticide, any pest, doesn't matter if it's something that impacts the bees or not, will, will get a resistance to it. So what you want from the nursery perspective is to make the cleanest plant possible to ship to customers and to re wholesalers that are free of any pathogen or pest because the last thing you want to do is have it spread all over the country. And then it's a bigger problem for USDA and trying to manage it. So the best way that we have seen it is that you want to be smart. People forget how much pesticides cost and that you just don't throw it on there. And you certainly don't throw on a pesticide that you don't know how effective it's going to be or what is it going to do to the plant? Because you don't put anything that you, it's unknown on there. So I think an I P M, Integrated Pest Management Program is probably the best B M P that you can start with, but then also just good old fashioned common sense.
How about you, Mr. Cummings? I know that in California, you're quite sophisticated in the farming industry and the bees in particular. What would you say? I mean, I, I heard your answer about the forage and the severe drought and the other issues, but what, what in California, what should we be doing or what are we doing that we shouldn't be doing?
I'll start with turning on talk. Is, first most important thing is really communication and coordination between growers of pollinated crops and pollination services, beekeepers, is to know what each other's doing and what our plans are. So for example, in the almond industry is that, of course, I own a bee business, but we also use other bee businesses, is we coordinate when the bees are going to be moved into the orchards. We discuss what other crops might be blooming in the area, what other crops might be experiencing pesticide applications in the area. The bees are brought in, they're strategically placed, water's provided. This year, we've been having this horrible drought is that we provide water for the honeybees. We coordinate when the bees are moved out. We try to coordinate our sprays and communicate with our beekeepers of what we're applying. We choose the softest materials and most bee friendly materials that are available and try to put them on the orchards after most of the pollen has been gathered so that there's, is a little direct contact between pesticides and a honeybee as possible. Integrated pest management has been mentioned, and that's, that's critical. That's something that the bee industry is, is deploying more and more with some of their tech transfer teams that are like our certified pest advisors, our CPAs that advise us with our crop production, going out now and working with beekeepers to know, to be able to identify what, what do they have in the colonies? Do they have foul brood? Do they have mites? Do they have nozema? When's the appropriate treatment levels to try to use more, but use it more timely? Excuse me, to try to use less.
Less, yeah.
But, but more timely. So those are examples of different best management practices. And in the end, I think it goes back to the collaboration between pollination service and pollinated crops.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings, just sort of, how long does a bee live? What's the average lifespan of a bee?
I'll defer to Dr. Pettis. I do know from my honeybee production is that if you're in a northern latitude where the days are very long and there's a hell of a sweet clover bloom is that those bees are working long, hard hours and, and don't live nearly as long as a well nourished bee in the fall that goes into semi hibernation in preparation for producing brood for, for almonds. So I, I believe 45 days to as much as five, six months.
Yeah, we have, we have winter bees and summer bees. In the summer, they can be very short lived, even as, on a heavy flow, even 15 or 20 days. But the average is probably 35 days in the summer, 200 days in the winter.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Chairman. As a new member of Congress and somebody that came in with a firm belief that Washington rarely knows best, in a, in a critical role that I see us playing on committees is one of oversight in, in looking out for business and Americans to avoid overreach and the like. So my question really to Mr. Cummings and to Mr. Stone, whose livelihood depends on, on the bee population, would just be the simple question, should Congress be playing any role whatsoever in this, this particular issue? And, you know, as we're finding out, there's, there's many different threats to the honeybees and is, you know, there's a lot of collaboration going on already to protect your industry. And, you know, with, with Dr. Pettis sitting there, as I'm hearing this discussion, it sounds like the USDA is actually working collaboratively with the industry, that, that they are looking out for what's best for the industry, whether it's, it's best practices or the like. And that right now, as I sit here, this has been educational, I don't know that I see any pressing need in this case for Congress to step in, unlike other areas where we've seen over, overstepping by the EPA and we need to make sure we don't define mud puddles as navigable waters. I, I don't see that issue here with the USDA. And I just wonder what, what your opinion is of the collaboration between the USDA, your industry, and do you really think in Congress there's a role for us to play in this very complicated issue? Mr. Cummings, you want to?
We, we did rock, paper, scissors and decided that I would go first, Congressman. Thank you for the question. The, the question about whether or not you should act, I, I think it's how you act and what you direct. And there is a bill before Congress that talks about putting, to ban the use of neonicotinoids until further review can be done by the Environmental Protection Agency. I think that's, I think it's well intentioned. I just, just know, I just don't know if it is the right thing to do.
That, to me, would be the overstep of Congress, thinking we always have a solution. We're rarely do we. So, yeah, that would be, I'm fully with you on that. That would be an overstepping, would never support that, so.
Well, one of, one of my own members of my delegation introduced the bill, so I can't be too cheeky about that. But I would, I would submit to you, though, and in my written testimony is about the role of Congress is to help direct research. There's a lot of research out there, and it's about accumulating that research and finding out not only what are the options for the use of this type, particular type of pesticide, which was misapplied in Oregon, okay, misapplied, and finding alternatives, helping work with our chemical companies about finding alternatives that will work well and have not, I mean, we don't want to harm the pollinator community, but we also don't want to increase health risks for workers who apply a pesticide. So my, my urging to you is to be collaborative, involve stakeholders, folks who, on the environmental community, the beekeeper community, the farm community, have them come together and work with researchers to try to find a suitable path forward.
And I would think that's a continued role between the industry and the USDA.
I'd like to echo Mr. Stone's remarks and just point out, it, it perhaps might be subtle until you give it a little thought, is that as a farmer, I like to have the broadest array of arrows in my quiver to address pests. And if you start removing those, or the EPA does, then I've got to go back, I've got to fall back to some other alternative that still is available. And oftentimes, those aren't nearly as beneficial to the honeybee. Second point would be continued funding of varroa. Is that, I, I think that the number, Mr. Chairman, is from 16 billion to 20 billion just goes with the increase in value of the almond crop in the last two years, is that we need to address and, and we need to get a solution for varroa mite. It benefits 90 different pollinated crops in the United States, about a third of our diet, and, and all the states. So funding of varroa mite research is critical. And then lastly, something could be done at little expenses, continued support of the C R P program and encouraging a richer mix of flowering species, not just grasses, but flowering plants in the C R P mix to, to enhance the natural forage that's available to honeybees. I think it, I can't imagine it would incur any additional cost.
Yeah, no, thank you for that testimony. What you've really pointed out were, when, when I say what is the role of Congress that's on a proactive way, what you've given me is two examples of where Congress should not be proactive, which I fully agree with. One is the EPA, the other is, is banning the nicomites. You know, that's a case of Congress, as I started out by saying, the overreach we shouldn't do and should back off. And again, this is one where I think what I'm sensing is the USDA is doing a very good job in, in working with the industry in a collaborative effort. We should let that continue, and I also do agree, the research dollars are, and, and making sure they're well used with input from you is something we, we should be cognizant of as we pass our appropriation bills. Thank you.
Yield back, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Ms. Hartsler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm very interested in this. I'm a farmer myself, but a few years ago, I found a bee colony in a dead tree in our pasture, and it was kind of fun. We had a beekeeper come out and help harvest that, and they saved the colony, and so they were going to treat them for the mites and make sure they were able to be healthy for a long time. And I got to try to strain honey out of the old combs, and it was a lot of fun. So certainly appreciate the role of bees and appreciate what you do. And I was just wondering, you know, while much attention has been given to the varroa mites, it's my understanding that other parasites and pests may affect honeybees. So I was wondering, what is the assessment, your assessment of the impact of these pests individually and collectively on bee colonies? And I guess, Dr. Pettis, maybe?
Well, certainly the varroa mite is not the only problem affecting honeybee health. And in fact, viruses are a good example of that. Honeybees all have viruses at low levels, but given an interaction with the varroa mite, those levels of viruses can spike. But the same can happen with something like nutritional stress or other stressors. So the pathogens, things like bacteria, fungi, and viruses are there, present in the bees. And when bees are under stress, then these things can, can manifest themselves, just like our own, our own bodies. If we're under various types of stress, it's the pathogens that often kill the bees, but there's some primary stressors that are driving that.
Very interesting. What do you think the most pressing need in research is right now? And is there adequate funding for that in, in our budget and the president's budget? I don't know. Dr. Pettis, maybe?
Kind of echoing what they were saying about some of the issues, I think the land use and forage efforts, C R P and others, that USDA has on a number of fronts are where some of the biggest impact can be made. Beekeeping in the U S has changed. It used to be about honey production. It's now about pollination, and the average colony gets, average commercial colony gets rented three to five times. So by definition, they're in a, an ag setting where they're only getting one source of nectar or pollen, and they always do better on a mixed diet. So if they can get mixed flowers and C R P and other programs can provide that, then they'll do better. So diversifying the agricultural environment through these land management programs, I think can have a huge impact.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and it, and it wouldn't necessarily incur that much cost, like you say, because we already have the C R P programs and just start promoting that more. So I really appreciate that information. USDA estimates bee colony losses normally average 17 to 20% per year, but in the winters of 2006, '07, and '07 and '08, losses average higher than normal, rates about 30% per year. So I was just curious, how is this number calculated? Who, who is surveyed? And how, how many losses, how have losses trended in the more recent years, 11, 12, 13?
So in 2006, 2007, when we started identifying colony collapse disorder as, as a major impact on bee losses, we started doing a, a survey, USDA, Animal Plant Health Inspection Service, the, the A P R inspectors in each state got together, and we did a survey of the beekeepers. What, what were your losses like from the, from the, through the wintertime? And so we started out with just manually calling things. We moved online, and now it's funded by a NIFA grant, Bee Informed Partnership does that. N A S, National Ag Statistics Service, has a honey survey that they do, have done for 75 years. There's, there's talk about N A S taking over that loss survey, and that would be good because then they reach out to all beekeepers and, and get total representation. The survey that we've conducted has represented about 20 to 40% of the managed colonies in the U S. So it's been fairly representative, but it's not as good a job as N A S could do in, in doing a loss survey.
And how have the losses compared in the last few years?
Two or three years ago, we had a loss of about 22%, but on average, they've been just at 30% or greater. And we'll have a new number May 6th. We have a report that'll come out of, for last year's losses. So they're still averaging in the 30% range, which again, is at least 10% higher than we expect with varroa mite. So very simply, before varroa mite, we had about 10% loss. With varroa mite, we moved up to almost 20% loss. And now with all these other factors, we're up to 30% loss. And beekeeping is kind of unsustainable at that rate.
Absolutely. Well, this is a very, very important issue, and I appreciate you being here today. Appreciate, Mr. Chairman, you holding this hearing because I think it's very vital for agriculture in many ways. So I yield back. Thanks.
Mr. Dunham from California.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Pettis, as you know, California's experiencing a tremendous drought right now. Secretary Vilsack has stated that USDA is acting to mitigate the crop losses due to the drought. What types of challenges or loss do you expect to see with the honeybees?
Well, it's a challenging question. We have that survey underway right now, and we'll have that figure May 6th. I do know for California specifically, this year coming out of almonds, the beekeepers are normally there from January, February into early March, and there's other things blooming in California. This past year, there was virtually nothing blooming in California due to the drought. So this particular year in California was unusual in that the bees had almonds and they had virtually nothing else. So we talk about the Midwest as being important, the Dakotas in the Midwest, because that's where the bees summer, 60 or 70% of the bees summer there, and then they go to California. But forage in California is critical as well. And I don't know where the loss figure will go this year.
And do you know if USDA is planning anything to mitigate any loss or, or address any of the challenges that we're facing with our pollinators?
I'd have to get back to you with specifics on whether we were looking at mitigating. I will say that this fall, we're going to, we're planning to hold a summit on forage that will look at forage issues this coming fall, so. But I, I don't know about mitigation. I, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings, have you seen your costs increase? Have you been forced to pay higher prices due to the colony collapse disorder?
Prices have definitely gone up from about $40 or so early in the 2000s to up to about $180 now. There was a Gianini Foundation that was study that was published about three years ago, and they did a correlation between two things, two driving factors for the cost of almond pollination. One of them was the dramatic increase in acreage and therefore the demand for honeybees. And then secondly, colony collapse disorder. The conclusion of that study was that the increase in costs are driven about 50/50, 50% by the increase in acreage, 50% by colony collapse disorder and the impact on the available supply of honeybees to the almond industry.
Thank you. Along with quadrupling, over quadrupling of, of the cost of, of honeybees, how tough is it to find them these days? And is it getting tougher? how tough is it to find them these days? And is it getting tougher?
You can always find boxes to put in the field, but whether that's a good viable colony, and how strong that colony is, as I know you know, as you're an almond farmer, so that's why I immediately started chuckling, is that there's a lot of growers out there that think they've got bees. It always amazes me, you know, is, to produce a pound of almonds, 13% of my variable costs of production, labor, water, equipment, fertilizer, 13% of our cost to produce a pound of almonds is for honeybee rent. And growers need to be more active, getting out there and looking in their boxes and seeing what they have, because some years are dramatically better than others.
Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you. Mr. Schrader, if you have any closing statements?
Well, I just appreciate the panel. Been very informative. I think it's gotten us a little better appreciation for the variety of problems that are causing problems in our pollinators right now. Appreciate the great work and research and thoughtful discussion that you guys bring to the table. And hopefully, we'll mirror that in what we do and what we don't do here in the halls of Congress. And just for the record, I am not that legislator from Oregon that introduced that bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lamoff, I think he had another question. Gentlemen, if you have just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, one more follow-up, I think, on that, Dr. Fisher. You know, there's a lot of research you're going to have underway soon, and I'm just wondering what, what do you think can be developed in the future? What will your emphasis be to improve bee health situations with the ongoing research? We talked about, it isn't just varroa, but we also have other pests and diseases that can be in emphasis as well. And what would you have on that, please?
Well, we are focused largely on varroa. We are working on some other things, but we are working on some new ways to control varroa, ways to apply chemicals in a novel way, so that the bees sort of self-dose, and beekeepers are able to rotate modes of action to combat resistance. We have some new chemicals that we're screening to see if we can come up with something novel. We're also working on small hive beetle, which is a pest that certainly in North Carolina and the South causes some problems, some ways to control the small hive beetle. And just general beekeeping practices, you know, how can agriculture and beekeeping coexist better? A number of people mentioned it. When you talk to beekeepers and growers, a lot of times, if they just communicate better, they can work out a lot of the conflicts. But we're trying to be a place where we can bring stakeholders together, we can work with multiple stakeholders to find some of these solutions.
Thank you. And Mr. Stone, Mr. Cummings as well, coordination was mentioned. Thank you, Dr. Fisher, on that. It makes a lot of sense. Where you have, you know, for backhoe folks, they have 1-800, call before you dig, whatever that number's called, you know. And so, it would seem like, is the system, you know, Mr. Stone, Mr. Cummings, working well enough on coordination, where, or is there more that can be done, more that perhaps we could emphasize if it's appropriate to have that coordination? You know, we've talked about a lot of things. Back when I was in the state, there was a lot of controversy over citrus as a place to house bees overwintering, you know, so they'd have a food source until they can get back into the spring. And, you know, but some controversy over when and where. So, can we do better on the coordination with the timing, with when a material might be applied? Or even, as was talked about, more place for forage? You know, I have a little idyl land that we can't grow anything on, maybe a positive program where we'd have certain types of cover crop that would be helpful to bees. What can we do in all this coordination area, either with government or not?
The industry's doing a lot of that on their own and getting better every year. And so, by way of example, it's really only been the last three or four years that we've clearly identified what a deficit we have in the availability of natural forage. So, Project APM in conjunction with the Almond Board of California has been sponsoring plantings of cover crops in fallowed areas adjacent to almond plantings, providing free seed, as a matter of fact. Also, developing best management practices and enhancing communication in the grower community. And obviously, the cost of the input to almond growers is getting almond growers' attention, and they're paying more attention also. So, I think we're making great strides in those areas. There's clearly more opportunity, but we're already doing very well. Give you an example, is Blue Diamond's got field staff, a dozen different field staff members that service the needs of our grower owners. And they're a wonderful vehicle for getting the word out and communicating to growers the things that they ought to be concerned about, and promoting the communication and cooperation with beekeepers, developing a beekeeping strategy, a pollination strategy. And so, at least the California almond industry is evolving in that, in that area, and recognizing the value of natural forage, and doing what we can through Project APM and the Almond Board to advance that.
Yeah, certainly, we have some of your colleagues set up bee yards in some of our idyl areas. The, Mr. Stone was talking about, and I think there's this emphasis, again, in Congress, do something, right? And so, we hear a piece of legislation might be to have a complete ban on the, on neonicotid.
That's close enough, Congressman.
To some extent. And that always, you know, there's always an overreaction, it seems, on things. And so, what I've heard is that when you have a misapplication, that's somebody using the material wrong. And if the label's not defined well enough for certain situations, those folks making the label have stepped in and further defined the label. So, people that use the material will better use that. And if they continually use it inappropriately, there's going to be a penalty for that. Do you believe we're on track using this better information, better emphasis on information? Are we on track of doing that without having to take a drastic measure on bans, as is, you know, some folks' natural course on these materials?
Congressman, I appreciate the question. I think that the EPA's response initially was actually pretty helpful. They are creating an insignia that looks like a bee on something that could be potentially toxic to the pollinator community. And just reiterating the fact that you are, you need to take in consideration when you're applying this particular pesticide, that you can do it when bees are present. One of the big challenges that we have is that we face language barriers, as well as we do anything else with some of our applicators. So, you want to try to use as many visuals as you can. And I think the EPA should get a little bit of credit for putting that forward. Now, saying that we should uniformly then ban until the science catches up, I think is a little bit of an emotional response. But I would say that your role, my plea to you is that I believe that the congressional role is to urge the type of research, get the type of alternatives that we have, increase public awareness. The one thing about the BTS in Wilsonville is that it sure as heck got a lot of public awareness to it. But I would submit that this type of pesticide, the neonic, are involved in a lot of different products, ranging from flea and tick items all the way to the stuff that you would buy to apply as an agricultural operation.
Real quick, how many bees per bee box? How many bees reside in one bee box?
Just for the last question, till we get to Mr. Costa.
Twenty thousand to 40,000, depending on the season.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Mr. Costa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for holding this hearing, Subcommittee. It's kind of a follow-up question by our colleague, Congressman Lamoff. 2008, we put funding in the farm bill to try to deal with the concerns with the loss of bee colonies throughout the nation. And in 2014, we did so as well. And I just finished a bag of almonds here, and knowing that California produces 95% of the world's almonds, obviously, this is important, but it's also important to a lot of other commodities that depend upon the pollination, as well as a whole lot of other important purposes that bees produce that are just now beginning to come to light. My question to those of you who would like to respond is, are we doing a good enough job coordinating the money from 2008 and 2014 with the private sector money? You mentioned the California Almond Board's efforts on research to deal with the decline of bee colonies. Is the money being, both the public and the industry money, being used and coordinated well to really determine not only the contributing factors to the losses, but also a strategy, as you mentioned a moment ago, toward addressing and those losses? Who would like to respond?
I'll just say that within USDA, we hold stakeholder meetings. That includes beekeepers, but also growers and other stakeholders, to get input in what, things we should be addressing. And there's good examples of us working with private partnerships with the Almond Board and things.
I know there's examples. I guess I'm trying to find out, is your senses of being, is it working? What, I mean, what is not working, I guess, and what could we do better? It's all perfect, huh?
It's not, no. The health of the honeybee is not perfect.
No, we know that. But I'm wondering, you know, this isn't a new issue.
And beekeepers are suffering. We've looked at honeybees as something kind of mystical, and they produce honey and wax, but it's really the pollination, and we need to think of them more as livestock. And I think we've not done that. We have not done that in the past. They're livestock, and they have one mission, and that is pollination, at least in agriculture. They do all these other magical things as well. And I think, working with the growers, the different growers that depend on bees for pollination, I think we're doing that, but I think it could always be improved.
Yeah, but I mean, this committee's job in part is oversight, okay? And so, what I'm trying to understand in terms of our role as oversight, is the federal funding being used well, as it should be. These are, in many cases, either taxpayer dollars or industry-related dollars, to coordinate with the various private entities or associations to really get to the bottom of this. I mean, where are we on this? Is there an evaluation? How do we provide the oversight to know that the money's being spent wisely? No one argues the cause.
I can try to speak to, try to speak to at least a part of this. As the chairman of the BTS works for the Almond Board of California, and is the past chairman of Project APM as well, we review a lot of bee research proposals that either the Almond Board funds or Project APM funds. And we've learned a lot as well over the last several years. We now have a scientific review committee at the Almond Board, at Project APM, at the Almond Board, we have the BTS force, to prescreen these research proposals and evaluate them, and ask questions of where is other money coming from? What areas of specialty exist out there with the ARS labs? And we continue to fund that. The Almond Board of California has spent a lot of money at the Carl Hayden Research Center.
No, I know you have.
To your question, we feel like we're getting good value there, because we're electing to spend our money there. We're a client, in a sense.
No, I got that. But I guess I'm just trying to understand from our oversight role, is there something that, I mean, we just don't want to continue to provide money. We'd like to see what the results are toward that effort, and that makes sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, and get to the root causes of the decline of these colonies, and to figure out how we fix this problem. And where are you?
I'll take another stab. As Dan mentioned earlier, we've actually probably only in the last five years recognized that honeybees are suffering for lack of forage. And so, all the USDA and even the private efforts by utility companies and others to increase the forage, I think is money well spent. So, there's some of that that's federal, there's some of that that's private, where these private partnerships are developing around forage. I think that's an area where we can have immediate and lasting impact.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my time has expired, but I guess I'm still, I think we're all cognizant of the challenges that we're facing here. What I'm just trying to find out is, I mean, do we think that if we invest X amount of dollars, we will arrive at a solution in two years or four years? Or, I mean, is the question the resources? Is the question the research? Or is the question that we just don't know enough yet? I mean, yeah, more storage, more forage is better for bees. I got that. But I don't know that you're any closer to solving what's caused. I mean, there's, everything I've read is that there are a number of factors that are resulting in the decline of the colonies. What I've not heard, I guess, is how we fix this decline.
You've heard that, that it's multifactorial, there's various factors involved, and so the answer is going to be complex. I think in this year's President's budget, there's some $25 million pollinator, I don't know what we call it, pollinator thing. And I was asked specifically by a number of individuals, would that turn bee health around? And I could not honestly say that even that infusion of money would turn it around tomorrow. And the reason for that is it is very complex. It's not going to take one answer. So, we're going to have to take, you know, it's, research helps, but then land use issues and things like that help as well. So, I couldn't honestly say that the huge infusion of money would turn it around tomorrow.
Mr. Davis.
Well, actually, I'm glad Mr. Costa went in front of me. My question is actually built on what his line of questioning was. And I first want to apologize to the panel that I came in late, had to go see some veterans on an honor flight who served our country. And that was our priority today. But this is a very important issue. As a matter of fact, I was actually out in the Central Valley of California with my good friend, Mr. Lamoffa and Mr. Valadeo, and saw parts of agriculture that someone in the Midwest doesn't get to see very often, including almond trees, pistachio trees, and other operations. I have a distinct concern of the colony collapse disorder. And when you look at Mr. Costa's questions about how are we utilizing our investment from the federal government to address this problem, and I found it very interesting, Dr. Pettis, your comment that 25 billion might not solve the problem. And it goes to the old adage that not everything's money to fix the problems. And with that in mind, I'd like to go to Mr. Cummings and ask you, you know, USDA has a publication called Using Farm Bill Programs for Pollinator Conservation. Can you tell us how you and California have been able to leverage some of these programs?
I'm not familiar with that document, so...
Better yet, have you guys in the private sector who are dealing with this issue on a regular basis, have you been able to leverage any of our farm bill programs, USDA research programs, to help further your research, to get to the point where we start to solve problems?
You know, I'm not prepared to answer that on behalf of the industry. Perhaps I could prepare some remarks and submit it to the committee for your review.
Okay. That'd be fine. How do you think USDA can better help these beekeepers then? You just heard from Dr. Pettis that 25 billion may not be enough, in his opinion. So, it's not just about money. What can we do in this committee to help you address this problem on the ground, to leverage federal funds or federal opportunities with some of the opportunities that you discussed in your testimony, and also that you discussed today?
Congressman, two areas. One of them would be a sustained and continued commitment to research on varroa mite. Boy, if that burden was lifted from our honeybee operation, it would make a tremendous difference. And then, the second area would be the availability of forage, which would be the CRP lands, and a richer mix of flowering plants in those CRP mixes.
Excellent. I appreciate the responses. I have a couple minutes left, and as I see that I'm winding down to the end, I want to give each of you a chance. Is there anything that this committee hasn't asked you that you'd like to address now? You're welcome to use the rest of my time to do so. Going once, going twice. I yield...
Let me just say, I haven't commented on the forage issue. Our industry also sees that as a tremendous need, that we need more opportunities for beekeepers to place bees in good quality habitat. Bees need food, shelter, and water, just like we do. And if we keep the bees healthy, they'll resist some of these diseases better. And if we can control the mites, we'll knock down the pathogen loads, and everything is intertwined. It's all intertwined.
Well, thank you, Dr. Fisher. And Lamoff, I see you took 10 minutes the first time. Do you need me to yield you the last minute?
I'm doing fine, sir.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Are you sure about that?
Reset the clock. I got another five minutes. All right.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for being here. And I know Mr. Schrader had to step out as well. And I know Mr. Schrader had to step out as well. I appreciate the fact-based approach and the making sure that we have the science right to help resolve this problem. I think one of the key questions with regard to the oversight is making sure that the money that is going from the taxpayers, from the United States taxpayers, into this research is producing the results that's needed to help, again, generate the value of the crop, which means that it will have a return for everybody. With that said, again, thank you for being here. And under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional materials and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member. The Subcommittee on Horticulture, Research, Biotechnology, and Foreign Agriculture hearing is now adjourned.